To order of the National Board of Education. It's March 27, 2023, 5:30, and we were in the Nashville High North Boardroom. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Present.
Mrs. Oden is here, and unfortunately, Ms. Gilio is not feeling well and will not be here this evening. We do have a short agenda, though. Why don't we go to the personnel recommendations? Do you have any questions, Ms. Johnson?
No, I'm good. No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
I move to accept the personnel recommendations of March 27, 2023.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I am calling this Board of Education meeting to order. It is 6:01 PM. It is March 23, 2023. We are in the Nashville North Boardroom. We have a crowd here tonight. I know that I let people know earlier before we started, if you're going to be speaking about Mount Pleasant, it's not on the agenda tonight, so you have to sign up for second public comment. So just make sure you're signing up on the rate sheets, and we will go ahead. Ms. Lamphier, can you do the roll call?
Sure. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
I am here. Paula?
Present.
Oh, Ms. Johnson, sorry.
It's okay.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And Ms. Gilio is not attending this evening. Thank you.
Well, also in attendance, we have Dr. Sarfati, Mr. Pasca, Dr. Andrade, Mr. Donovan, and our student representatives, Dante Costellano and Warren Farley. I wanted to call you William. It's because we were talking about Ireland and Braveheart earlier. Okay. Paula, can you lead us in the pledge after Ms. Lamphier does the prayer?
Sure will.
Thank you.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. Just a little housekeeping. We have a lot of people here. We do have to keep the doorways clear just for the fire code and stuff. And if you guys are going to hold up signs, stay in the back of the room so you're not obstructing people's view. It still has to be a publicly accessible meeting. If you're holding up a sign, people can't see it, we're no longer providing an accessible meeting. And tonight, we have something on the agenda in regards to a bond, but I'm going to have Alderman Dowd come up now during the presentation to speak to the bond so that he can get out and get to his next meeting. I apologize for throwing things out of order, but in the best interest of all of the votes happening in the city, Mr. Dowd is going to join us now.
Yes, I'm sorry I have to leave, but as she mentioned, I have to chair two public hearings tonight, and I have to leave by 6:30, no later. So the easiest way is to read the letter that I sent to the board today. This involves R. 23098, which is a bond to complete the work at the new middle school, Brian S. McCarthy Middle School. So it's the letters from myself as the chair of the Joint Special School Building Committee to the Board of Education. Dear members of the board, you have before you this evening a request to approve R. 23098 to add an additional $10 million to the middle school project bond. When we all approved the guaranteed maximum price for the Brian S. McCarthy Middle School as part of the middle school project, we realized that we would need this additional $10 million to be added to the previously approved $118 million bond. When the GMP was approved for the McCarthy School, the $10 million was added to the city's bond plan, and the mayor and the city treasurer and the Joint School Building Committee were all made aware that we would need to come up with the $10 million added to the bond, and it was therefore added to the city bond plan. We held off on formally requesting the additional bond money until now to give us time to see how much bond money was left from the Fairgrounds and Penachuck School construction projects. Fairgrounds was completed on schedule and under budget. We recognized $1.4 million in savings. And I have just signed the substantially complete paperwork for Penachuck. Only outside work and punch list items remain. And while there will be some savings at Penachuck, it's not as high as was expected due to a few, what I refer to as unknown unknowns, such as security bollards that were requested to be installed at all schools by Homeland Security, and other requests by Nashville Fire Rescue. We had to replace the entire fire panel. The city planning and school district IT security changes. The original cost estimate on these items was exceeded. We still completed the project on time and under budget, but our savings were not as high as at Fairgrounds. We also are looking at a requirement to install dehumidification at Penachuck, especially on the new wings, and we will need the Fairgrounds and Penachuck savings to complete the work if undertaken. We have held off on that part of the Penachuck project until we had a better understanding of where we were at financially and schedule-wise on the McCarthy School, which is going very well, and to ensure the additional bond money was approved for the McCarthy School before making any final decisions on Penachuck dehumidification. As mentioned, the McCarthy School construction is going very well, but the issues surrounding inflation and nation's supply chain issues, we will need this additional $10 million of bond money to complete the school on time. We fully believe that we will not exceed the full $10 million additional authorized bond, but we need to ensure we have escalation and contingency accounts intact in case of any additional unknown unknowns. Our construction manager, Harvey, has done an outstanding job keeping costs within budget, but some items have doubled in cost due to additional fuel costs, labor costs, and other energy cost increases. I'm asking you to send approval recommendation to the Board of Alderman's Budget Committee and the full Board of Alderman so final action can be taken on this resolution by the April 11th, final action by the April 11th Board of Alderman meeting. Without this funding, the completion of the McCarthy School could be in jeopardy. Again, this is not an increase of cost from the improved GMP, but rather just approving the original cost estimate. So we have had many other items added to the McCarthy School, but we're doing very well. The winter helped us in that the athletic fields are all graded and ready for seed. That was originally not supposed to happen until spring, but we still have a long way to go on the McCarthy School. Things come up when you're doing building projects, especially the size of the McCarthy School, and we need to have this $10 million so that when anything comes up that's unexpected, we can handle it right away. If we waited till much later, it's a two-month process to get a bond approved, so it would... and you can't keep contractors sitting around for two months waiting for somebody to come up with some additional money. So the intent is to pass the $10 million. We'll have that set aside, and hopefully we can have substantial savings from that $10 million. If we don't spend the $10 million, then the money that's left over either is the bond not sold, or an action of the Board of Alderman could allocate it to another project, another school project or whatever, but it would not be counted against the middle school project. So I will have to leave, but if anybody has any questions?
Ms. Johnson?
Why did we have to replace, was it the entire fire panel? Is that what you said?
Yes, because when we doubled the size of the school, the fire panel couldn't handle all the additional fire alarms.
So this wasn't estimated at the beginning?
No, it was something the fire department came up with when we started looking at what it was going to take. Also, the panel was like 28 years old, so it made a lot of sense to change it and bring it up to code.
Well, this is, like I said the other night at our Budget Committee, some of these things, when we hire a contractor, should be looking at this ahead of time, so then this way we know what the true costs are upfront, that we're not coming back and saying we need another $10 million. And I'm glad to hear that that $5.8 million for the dehumidifier should have been in this to begin with. And, you know, now, when we sell a bond, if we sell it between now and whenever, if the interest rates are still high, it's going to cost us more money. So the life of this bond now that you're looking for us to approve is how many years? Is this another 30-year bond, 20-year bond?
It's a 30-year bond.
30 years, so it's going to be 30 years until we pay it off. I'm not going to pay it off. I won't be here.
But anything that we don't expend will never be sold, so...
Right. And so with the rising interest rates right now... So can I just ask Mr. Donovan a question? Mr. Donovan, we have that $5.8 million in our budget for the dehumidifier for Penachuck. If in fact, we get the money from the bond, is that money going to move over to probably deferred maintenance that we need to do on the schools to offset that $14 million?
The $5.8 million is not in our operating budget. That was a list that Mr. Smith added of potential bonds, so that's not in the budget that we proposed on Wednesday.
Okay, so this would be going into that bond, that $5.8?
I believe it's capital, that that money is set aside in capital improvements projects and would have to be funded at a later date if we didn't do it as part of the middle school project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Brown?
So what are the savings on the Penachuck Middle School?
We aren't totally completed yet. I had substantially completed, but we are going to be having a meeting probably later this week. I hesitate to throw out a number because we aren't finalized yet, but it will probably be one side of the other of $1 million, probably.
Okay. And when you say savings, is that just that we did not exceed the guaranteed maximum price, or is that savings against the actual, what we thought the estimated cost was going to be?
It's the same thing.
The guaranteed maximum price, but you, we were told in the past that it was not, that was the absolute highest end possible, so we didn't exceed the guaranteed maximum price?
It was a savings under the guaranteed maximum price.
Okay.
And we can't exceed the guaranteed maximum price anyway without a formal vote.
Right. I'm aware. Okay. So what is actually, I have one more question. So it's a 30-year bond. How long until we are expected to have to start doing other major maintenance projects on these buildings?
Say it again.
On the Penachuck and Fairgrounds and the new middle school. It's a 30-year bond for $10 million. How long are we talking before we have to do other, will we be expected to be doing other general maintenance, that we're going to start hitting that backlog of entering those projects into our current deferred maintenance projects? Like how long until things start to expire in these new buildings?
Not sure I understand the question because there's no maintenance taken out of...
Does the roof last more than 30 years?
Excuse me?
Does the roof last more than 30 years?
Absolutely.
And are there any of those other large-scale projects that are going to be fewer than 10 years?
No, we wouldn't do them if it wasn't going to last. That's just like when we built these two high schools. These high schools are over 20 years old, and we haven't had major expenses.
There's a few that are starting to pile up there.
20, 21 years old now.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Lamphier? I am trying to be cognizant that Alderman Dowd has to leave fairly quickly, so if these are questions that could wait until later on and we hit it on the agenda item, and maybe Mr. Donovan can speak to it?
I just wanted to ask Alderman Dowd if the prices have kind of, are they still rising, the prices for construction things, or are they kind of stabilized right now?
Yes, item-by-item specific. We've done very, very well on the McCarthy School. We have a complete list of everything that we either bought or are buying for the school, and I would say it's 95% to 98% of them are green, which means they're under what was anticipated to be spent. But several things happened, like as an example, we just not too long ago contracted for the snow removal and landscaping for the school. It's 22 acres, the landscape. That cost estimate doubled, and the reason it did is because most of that activity involves machines with gas, trucks and bulldozers and whatever. And we've had some cost increases in the general maintenance contractor. Originally, we started the project before, when steel doubled in price, but most everything we were able to buy ahead of time and get the savings and put it aside before we had that major increase in prices with the supply chain issues. So we're in pretty good shape. Now, when things come up, like at the McCarthy School, we have to put bollards in front of every single door. There are a lot of doors, and that was Homeland Security. So there are other things that come up, security-wise, or, you know, I think we just had to do a change to put in a lift for a handicapped student. There are things that come up that aren't part of the original estimate, and so we need the escalation accounts and the contingency accounts to cover those kinds of unanticipated things. We are not at any point going to ever exceed the bond.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Dowd. I just wanted to put a plug in for my endangered salamanders. I know we had to pay extra to make sure that we were protecting those guys as well. But if anybody who's watching this wants to take a look at those financing, financial costing sheets, can they access them through still the middle school project on our website? And then I know there's another way through the city. How do you do it from the city website?
The city just refers you back to the schools' website, because they're all on the schools' website. The middle school project, you can see all the expenses.
Thank you.
And the salamanders are well taken care of. That was another expense that was sort of unexpected. We had to do those special culverts underneath the road. We had to completely fence in the one vernal pool that was left there. So there are a number of things.
Thank you.
So Ms. Darling, and then I'm going to say goodbye to Alderman Dowd.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. My only question is, is this something that could have been brought to us sooner?
It could have been. It still would have been the $10 million because we were waiting to see what happened with Fairgrounds and Penachuck. We did have a few additional expenses at Penachuck that kept the savings down. We still finished under budget, but it was found after we put the two wings up, that at least the two wings needed dehumidification. We had to go out and buy fans for a couple of days that were really, really warm, and it would be much more comfortable for staff and students if we do the dehumidification. There are various levels that we could get into, but Joint Special, I'm sure you've heard enough about it. So what we want to do, as soon as this bond passes, then we're going to be looking at the cost to do the dehumidification, and the majority of those funds, if not all the funds, will come from those two savings from Fairgrounds and Penachuck.
Thank you. I think my only worry is, this is the second time that you've come to us about BM Middle School with it being a very much a, without this, the completion can't happen, and very much like a make a decision quick, understand this quick. And I know I personally do not understand a lot of these topics. I have not gone to school in anything to do with bonds. So I mean, I just, I kind of wish that I had been able to see something like this a little sooner so I could actually research it and understand more of it.
When we came up with the guaranteed max, well, if contractor came up with the guaranteed maximum price, the architect does a design, the construction manager contractor does an estimate of cost, and they look at guaranteed maximum price. That says that everything the architect has designed can be done for this price and nothing more. Any changes to that have to be fully approved by the Joint Special School Building Committee. We knew two years ago we were going to need this additional money because we had the guaranteed maximum price. I was hoping that we were going to come in with enough savings on the two schools to not have to go in for the full $10 million, but at this point in time, and with the condition of things in the supply chain and inflation, it's not prudent to not do the full $10 million to make sure we finish the school on time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming, Alderman Dowd. We appreciate it. I'm sure if any of the board members have any follow-up questions...
Send me an email.
We know how to find you.
[laughing]
Thank you very much, and we'll come back and we'll make the formal vote on this in agenda order.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your meetings tonight. Okay, so this brings us up to our consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Darling. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Oh, we're missing people tonight, but still it passes. Okay. Any items to add to the consent agenda? Okay, so this brings us up to our first public question comment period. Will somebody please hand me the sign-up sheet? I'm going to guess it's Mr. Marku. You just really wanted to rush up and give me paperwork?
Well, I'm first, so...
Right.
Save some time. Couple people behind me that want to talk later.
Yes.
Adam Marku, I'm president of the National Teachers Union. I live at Forge Elory Lane, and I'm here to talk about the par contract. I've said my piece a lot already about it, so I won't drag on, but it is before you tonight. You have the costing sheet, you have the changes. It's not very different from the one in December, but addresses some of the concerns we have with the salaries of that group, so I'm hoping tonight that we can ratify it and send it to the Board of Alderman, because it may be March, but we are coming up at the end of the cycle of how long it's going to take to get through over there in the end of the school year. So I'm hopeful that we can expedite that on that end, but looking for your votes to approve tonight. I do want to clarify that I fully understand the stance of board members looking for the costing sheet, and that I did not begrudge them or Mr. Donovan for not having it for that Monday meeting. There was circumstances that were happening, so I just want to be clear on that part. My gruffness was about not knowing the process, and hopefully we can address that moving forward. My second comment tonight is about the school calendar. June 19 is on there for Juneteenth. I am in no way up here arguing against a federal holiday, but how we honor it. All our federal holidays currently, with the exception of one, is a district-wide closure. The only exception to that is President's Day, and everyone works that day. It's a day off for the kids. Kind of makes sense because we're all off for our vacation, or most of us the next week. So there are some hiccups with the changing to a calendar in March for June and for next year. Dr. Andrade will probably address on his side of things, but we have been in communication about how to address the hiccups, how it impacts mainly our secretary's contract. So, you know, we are aware of that. We have been in communication. We are looking to address that somehow, likely is going to require an MOU, but we're not there yet, but we are looking at how to find a solution to that, so... All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gary Hoffman.
Good evening, Gary Hoffman, 38 Purham Street, Nashville, New Hampshire. I teach at Fairgrounds Middle School, just so everyone knows. First of all, I want to echo what Adam said. The paras have waited long enough, so I really encourage everyone to pass the contract tonight, and that's all I'm going to say about that. The other issue I want to talk about is policy IKE, which is grade promotion, retention, and acceleration of students. I read through the policy, and I think it might do us some good to send it back for a little extra work. I think the language is a little too vague, and here's my rationale. I've been teaching in the district for 20 years, and, you know, my first couple of years, we had some specific standards for holding students back. We got away from that around 2005, and there are some good reasons we changed what we did. But what we've been seeing at the middle school level, I'm sure at the elementary and at the high school, is a lot of students are being pushed along the grades without any serious interventions. You know, we're seeing students failing every single class, not coming to school, and they're being moved on. And I'm not saying to hold those students back. What I'm saying is, you know, in part two of the recommendations, they say if a teacher or a parent has a concern about a student, that they're to be referred to a committee, they're to contact the principal, they put a team together. What I think really needs to happen is us to get some specific language there for the referral piece. I'm not saying to retain the student, but to at least have a meeting. If a student's failing multiple classes over multiple years, I would like to see that meeting happen. Not all kids have parent advocates who, you know, we have students that are homeless, unfortunately, and they, you know, they might not have those advocates, and for whatever reason or not, those meetings might not be happening. And I think that if a student's struggling, that we should have some specific language. At the middle school, we use the traditional grading scales. I knew they have a very different grading system at the elementary. But I would think we would do ourselves a favor to have a specific mechanism that, all right, you're failing three core classes, we're going to have a meeting, let's have a menu of interventions that the team's going to decide upon, whether that's, you know, getting a tutor, something in the summertime, or if it's really appropriate, in the worst-case retention, which is, I got to say, you know, almost never happens at the middle school level. That's really my recommendation. I really think we need something a little more specific. Instead of right now, it's a pretty vague statement, and we're going to be losing some kids. We are pushing a lot of kids along, and they're not getting some of those basic skills, you know, that really important transition of reading to learn and learning to read. A lot of kids never learn to read, and so they can't really read to learn. That really should be happening in third grade. So I recommend that it's put back to policy for a little more work. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is the end of first public comment. Just for people who are new to public comment, we do typically keep it to a three-minute, so when, if there are a lot of people signed up for the next one, I will be keeping time. So just a little bit of housekeeping. I always forget to say something, don't I? Okay, this brings us up to the superintendent's comments. I will give the floor to Dr. Andrade.
Thank you. I'll begin my comments this evening by talking about the redistricting, just as I did last time we met. Redistricting is important to ensure that we are leveraging our resources in the best possible way to support all of our students. The work of the elementary school redistricting committee is just in its infancy. Over the next month, we will be looking to review boundary lines across the elementary schools in the current configuration and review the boundary lines in a configuration that would include closing one of our elementary schools, most likely Mount Pleasant Elementary School. We need to review both configurations because of the drop in enrollment over the last 10 years and because of the uneven classroom sizes across all schools. last 10 years, and because of the uneven classroom sizes across all schools. Talk of closing a school creates unease and a lot of questions. This is not an easy process. We recognize and understand our students spend more time in elementary school than any other level throughout their school years, and students and families form special bonds during that time. I want you to know we are undergoing a thorough review process. In the end, what won't change is what goes on inside of our schools and our classrooms. Wherever this process leads, I want you to know that the students' academic progress and success is the guiding factor. We want to be sure we are putting our resources in the right places to serve all of our students, their families, and the city of Nashua. To keep update, up to date with the development of the redistricting plans, please log onto our website at nashua.edu and click on the redistricting page. Development of our FY 2024 operating budget. Last Wednesday, our admin team launched two weeks of presentations to the Nashua Board of Education Budget Committee. I want to emphasize our priorities of our school are tier-one systems around curriculum instruction and assessment, science of reading, portrait of a learner, real-world learning experiences and opportunities, as well as our ELL and special education services. We look forward to presenting our, to the budget committee on Wednesday, an overview of our curriculum, our CTE, ELL, athletics, and special education. Staff and student achievement. This week, I would like to bring attention to several great happenings in our schools. First, congratulations to Abigail Lee, North Class of 2024, who won the gold in the New Hampshire Skills USA Culinary Competition, demonstrating high skill in all aspects of menu preparation, including classical knife cuts, Menson herbs, and mastering chicken butchery and fabrication, whatever that is, but it's, getting kind of hungry, as well as preparing an oven breast of, of chicken with a special sauce dinner. So, Alicia Ariola, North Class of 2023, took the silver, demonstrating high skill alongside Abby in a statewide competition. Because of their success, they will now be eligible for Johnson and Wales University in Rhode Island and Culinary Institute of America scholarships. Great work, Abby and Alicia. Congratulations to our very own Chelsea Fallarini, math teacher at Penachuk Middle School, who was presented the Richard C. Evans Distinguished Math Educator Award. The New Hampshire, New Hampshire Teachers of Math, Mathematics presented Chelsea with a highly regarded award at its annual spring conference last week in Exeter. The Evans Award recognizes creativity and innovation in the teaching of math. Again, congratulations, Chelsea. Additional student achievement. Over the last few weeks, our students have been taking part in several great statewide events, including Math Counts, Destination Imagination, and the New Hampshire Script Spelling Bay. It is great to see our students step up and participate, to challenge themselves academically and creatively, to develop their presentation, communication, and technical schools, skills, and really think outside the box. Congratulations to all of our students who take on the added challenge. And lastly, the Class of 2023 graduation exercises. The most important dates of the school year have been announced. North, North Class of 2023 will graduate on Monday, June 12th, and South Class of 2023 will graduate Tuesday, June 13th. We are looking forward to sunny days at Stella Stadium for our graduates and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member response to superintendent's comments. I will start over here with Ms. Darling.
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
I just want to congratulate Mrs. Farini and the students who won their cooking competition. That's exciting. I don't have anything to say on the rest of it yet. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Claffey? No comment. Ms. Lamphier?
No, no comment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown? Ms. Johnson?
I just want to congratulate our culinary students, and I'll send them my address, and they can make dinner for me. It sounded really good. Thank you.
Ms. Oden?
Yes, I want to congratulate our students also, and maybe I missed it, maybe you said it. It is Stella Stadium again. Oh, thank you. I, I think that has been a real plus for our students to graduate from something that is so familiar to them, where they've spent a lot of time enjoying their classmates and enjoying the performance of the athletes. So, thank you.
Thank you. And this pops us over to our student member comments. Who did you guys decide who's going first today?
Dante tonight.
Okay.
Good evening. So, spring sports are now in full, full swing with competitions beginning, beginning in the coming weeks, different dates for different sports and stuff like that. A few important date announcements. Friday, April 14th is junior prom, while senior prom is June 3rd. Senior finals are June 6th and 7th, while the rest of students have their finals on June 16th and June 20th. Also, the Nashua South Clothing Closet is collecting backpacks, and they can be dropped off at the main office, security, or the media center. And they're also always open to clothing donations, obviously, and the pantry is open to food donations. The next registration and lottery for driver's ed is going to be May 15th at 3:30 in the lecture hall at South. And I also just wanted to make it clear that I'm always open to hearing questions, comments, and concerns from South students. You can contact Student Activities if you need to get in touch with me or anything like that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This morning, the first of my letters to the students of Nashua North went out to all the Google classrooms. These letters are designed to inform and update the students of Nashua North on what the board, on what the board meeting agenda contains for that night's board meeting. The first letter was not exactly what I envisioned due to time restraints. The letter that I sent out merely identified the board's intentions, but did not, but did not really describe them. While this is a start, I hope to be able to accurately summarize and describe the agenda, not just identify it. The next letter will be sent out on the morning of April 17th. Hopefully, this letter will have the distinct corrections that I have identified. I hope that this letter will continue to grow and develop into a useful resource for Nashua North students. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's very nice to see when we get the, the high school announcements. It's the Fridays with Warren. I'm like, I know that guy. Okay, this brings us up, we have met as the budget committee. Would you like to give us just a little bit of an update, Ms. Johnson?
We had Mr. Smith come in, give us a presentation, Mr. Rodriguez on technology, and Mr. Donovan gave us an overview also. So, it's moving along. We just had the beginning of it. We have another, I believe, three meetings next week and two in April, I believe it is. And then we'll get into our wrap-up, and then we'll go to the Board of Alderman. And I'm up next, anyway.
Yes, so the floor stays with you, Ms. Johnson.
I love it.
For Committee on Finance and Operations.
Thank you. Our committee met on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, 6:00 PM here at the North Nashua Boardroom. I move to approve the Bill Munson Memorial Bench to be located near the back entrance of the Nashua High School South Athletic Wing. Funding for the project will be provided by the Munson family.
Second?
Does anybody need an overview? Is this self-explanatory?
No, it's self-explanatory.
Okay.
And we need a motion on this because it's over a certain amount of money, right? Or can it just go?
I've got it here as a motion.
Okay.
Because it's a donation.
So, you're making that motion. Is anybody seconding?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. So, no further comments or questions. All those in favor of approving the Bill Munson Memorial Bench, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the contract to Stanley Elevator Company in the amount of $28,930 to repair the elevator at Burchill Elementary School. Funds will come from the school district deferred maintenance account.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Anybody need an explanation on that, or is it self-explanatory with the elevator?
That goes up and down, right?
Yep, and it's for a child with disability.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the contract to Stanley Elevator in the amount of $28,930 to repair the elevator at Burchill Elementary, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to-
We have liftoff.
Liftoff, yeah, to the moon. I move to approve the four-year lease contract, lease option with specialized purchasing consultants, SPC, in the amount of $107,502.26.
Second? Can you speak to this a little bit?
It's just for copiers.
For copiers. Okay. Copy.
We need those copiers.
Okay.
By going four years, it was less expensive. Yeah. Thank you for adding that four-year lease.
Mm-hmm. That is an expense. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the four-year lease option with specialized purchasing consultants in the amount of $107,502.26, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And my final one is I move to approve the FY 23 February transfer report.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions on the transfer report? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that's the end of my reports.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. The floor now goes to Ms. Raymond for the Committee on Policy.
Thank you. Ms. Bishop, we have been chugging along in policy, and we have quite a few this evening. So, I'll start with the motion, and then we can, I think some of them will have discussion this evening. So, the first one is I move to approve policy ACE, procedural safeguards, nondiscrimination on the basis of handicaps slash disability as amended.
Second?
Okay, and just to speak to this, you'll notice on the agenda, we kind of added in there, and to continue work to update further. The policy committee was unhappy with some of the language and the lack of specificity in this policy. However, we need something to replace the old one. The old one is not appropriate anymore. So, we're going with, the committee suggested that we go ahead and approve the paragraph that is in your packets, which is what's recommended by the School Board Association. And then Ms. Lamphier has volunteered to work with Student Services and Special Education within the district to continue to update this policy and make it a little bit more specific for what Nashua needs. Absolutely.
So, the meeting hasn't been scheduled yet, but the, the policy refers parents to the New Hampshire procedural safeguards, which are very complicated. It's in legal language. It's hard to understand. And I just felt like it would be really great if, if Nashua could lead the way in making, making it easier for parents to understand, especially, especially thinking of our parents who English is their second language. You know, part of the procedural safeguards is that we do not want an adversarial relationship between the school district and families. But if we start off by giving them information that they don't really understand and can't really figure out what it means, that kind of develops a sense of mistrust and leads to an adversarial relationship. So, I'm hoping that we can come up with something. So, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so all those in favor of approving policy ACE, procedural safeguards as amended, and to continue to work to further update, to update further, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I just, I know Ms. Lamphier spent some time doing, learning how to do policy advocacy for families and individuals with, with disabilities, and you must be bursting with pride to be able to come to the floor with this. I know you worked very hard to get your foot in the door for that, so I'm, I'm happy for you, I guess.
I want to change the world, but we can't do it all at once, so.
Do it one policy at a time. Sorry, Ms. Raymond, back to you.
No, that's great. I'm very excited to see what Ms. Lamphier is able to come up with in, you know, conjunction with the district. All right, so I move to approve policy GCCBC, Family Medical Leave Act.
Second?
This is just small legal updates. They've changed the number of hours.
Comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy GCCBC, Family Medical Leave Act, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move to approve policy IKE, grade promotion, retention, and acceleration of students as amended.
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Darling.
I know that we had public comments earlier this evening on wanting to hold off on this or maybe send it back. We did add, so originally, the policy just said, we'll develop procedures for promotion and retention. This new policy has some guidelines. It's got five different steps that, that we're asking staff to take when we do identify a student that either needs to be held back a little or accelerated a little. And it, it calls for conferences and meetings and a team to come together to talk about what's best for this particular student's particular situation. I take Mr. Hoffman's comments to heart, though, because I agree with him that we ought to be intervening as soon as possible to get our students the assistance that they need. And you'll see that when we come down to a policy on participation in athletics based on your grades. We've changed that to put a little bit more supports in and kind of wraparound services for students who are struggling, who also want to, you know, compete in sports. And I would love to see the district working on doing that for students who aren't athletes or involved in extracurricular activities as well. So, having said that, I don't know that we want to hold off on approving what we have now since it does lay out more steps.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I know Mr. Hoffman's going to fall over here, but I agree with you 100%. Same thing with Mr. Markou. I think, I know Mr. Claffey.
Talk about news.
I know. I think your points are very well taken. And I would say we pass this and go back to the table and add these additional comments on here, so at least we have a starting point, and maybe have Mr. Hoffman send an email over to Ms. Raymond with his exact wording, and then, and bring it back to policy and see if we can add this in. Because I agree with you. I mean, there are many kids that are moving along where they shouldn't have been moving along, and that they should have maybe not stayed back, but getting that extra attention. Then there are some students that probably should never get passed on to those grades. And then what happens when they get to the middle school and the high school, they're behind. So, our job here, and our goal is here, to make sure our students go on to the next grade level and are prepared to be there. So, I want to thank you for bringing this. I will support this tonight, but I'm going to ask if you could please send your wording to Ms. Raymond, so maybe we can get this added in here and revisit this as soon as possible. Because I think this is the most important thing. If that foundation by third grade is not there, we can lose our students, especially in reading, and that's not what we want to do. We're adding all these Wilson reading programs and everything right now to make sure our students get that foundation that they need in reading. To, for them to fall behind would be a disservice to them, and I don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And I tend to agree. And I'm, I'm hoping, based on this conversation, that perhaps Dr. Sarfati and Mr. Pasca can get together before Mr. Pasca and I meet again for our next planning session, to talk about, should we have a rider to this policy with, you know, different, a focus for elementary students versus middle school students versus high school students? Because obviously, interventions would be different depending on the developmental age. And I don't think I have the expertise to do that on my own.
Mr. Pasca?
To Ms. Raymond's point, I think if, that next step should involve other layers of this to bring to the table. So, if we could get some input from, from Mr. Hoffman in the middle school, and I think then also consult with the, the teachers and administrators at the elementary level, we can have a more well-rounded review of this. But to Ms. Johnson's point, I think it'd be nice to have this in place, and we can continue to review and update it as necessary.
Yes. I like that it includes the kids who are also accelerating past their grade. I know that we had programs in place before to address students who were, you know, kind of twiddling their thumbs in class. We don't have that anymore. Lots of extra reading, I'm sure, in the classes, but I do miss those. Was it sale back in the day? Sale, reach? Way old school. But I'm glad that we're adding those kids in as well. Okay, so any other further comments or questions on policy IKE? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. So, the next one is policy IKER. Oh, sorry. I move to approve IKE, actually. I move to approve IKE, actually.
Is that the one you want to send back for tweaking?
I, actually, I think I'm going to request that we, no. So IKER, we crossed out high school and made regular communication steps to be district-wide, but based on the conversation we just had, now I'm wondering if the district still wants to do that, or if we should focus our specificity as far as next steps on IKER.
I mean, to this point, I think if everything is in IKE right now with the adjusted vote, so I think it might be a matter of, as we adjust IKE, do you want to specify specific grade levels as part of IKE? But I think there was value in kind of combining IKE and then IKE-R into one policy that we can review. And that was what was recommended at the Policy Committee. So IKE-R was.
Oh, to rescind it, that's right.
Was put into IKE. So it was basically just one whole policy that, based upon what we just discussed, needed to be updated and reviewed based upon other inputs from the grade levels.
Okay. All right, so based on that, I will move to rescind IKER, and then we will continue our work with IKE.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lampeir. Further comments or questions? Hearing none on the motion to rescind Policy IKE-R, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
I think for this one.
Yes, so.
Gingras to come down here?
I asked Ms. Gingras to come this evening, because the next policy, I'll make the motion, and then we can talk about it. So I move that we approve JJJA Student Extracurricular Eligibility Expect, duh, I'm going to try it again, JJJA Student Extracurricular Eligibility Academic Expectations.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. So this policy, Ms. Gingras has put countless hours into it, and we've basically rewritten, I'm saying "we" as if I had anything to do with it. Ms. Gingras has basically worked with the NHIA's, NHIAA's recommendations, best interests of students, the various principles, to rewrite this policy in a way that is more supportive of students. I wholly endorse what she has done. However, it is very complicated, and given the amount of red line in this policy, I thought that members might have some questions, and that it would be helpful to have our athletic director here to answer them directly. So, thank you, Ms. Gingras, for coming.
Do you want to give us a brief overview on, and I'm sure it's not countless hours for you, I'm sure you know exactly how much time you put into this. I don't count my hours. So, thank you, I will be very brief. First and foremost, one of the biggest changes, including in the title, which affects the motion that you just made, is the reference to co-curricular activities, not extracurricular activities. That a lot of what our students do, not only in the athletic realm, but in performing realms, as well as other activities and things like that that they participate in, is, in many cases, the only reason they come to school, so that they can participate in those. So it's, in collaboration, the two things are working together, they're not extra. So that's the first thing.
So the motion should be to approve JJJA Student Co-Curricular Activity Eligibility Academic Expectations. It was simply a typo on the agenda. Apologies.
Thank you.
It is correct on the policy.
Okay, thank you. So, very briefly, the high school portion, as Mrs. Raymond has stated, has basically been completely written. In your red line, you can see that. So, a couple of things to keep in mind, in the NHIAA, which is our governing body for high school athletics, in a strict four-by-four like we have at the high school, you are required to pass 50 percent of your classes. Be considered a full-time student and pass 50 percent. So basically, we are using that as our guide through this. So instead of having what we currently have eligible, not eligible, with the ability to apply for an academic waiver, what we're doing is we're changing it to, if you have one or fewer non-passing grades, you're eligible. You can participate as long as your grades stay good. If you violate the 50 percent, so you are not passing 50 percent of your classes, you are not eligible, and there is no longer an opportunity to apply for a waiver. At that point in time, you're violating the state's policy. We really can't do anything about that, at least in athletics. So there's no opportunity for a waiver. What we have changed, and what we have rewritten here, is the middle group of students. They're going to be conditionally eligible. So if a student falls into that realm, they're passing 50 percent, so they're conditionally eligible, they are going to go on an automatic every-week progress report, which is what we do now with students who are on academic waivers. Every week, they come to my office, they pick up a piece of paper, they bring it to all of their teachers, and we get a very updated, even more so than what students and kids see in their parent portal, we get a, what does it look like right now on Friday? Based on that, if a student is doing well, great job, keep it up, we'll see you next Friday. If they're, eh, you're not doing so great, we give them that first warning. Look, you're not doing so great this week, you're kind of on thin ice here. If this is not improved, improved next week, then we're going to put you on a pause. And sometimes we do that. We put students on a pause, not as a punishment, but more of a gift of time. You need to go focus more on your academics right now. Go back, make up your grades, recover some stuff, turn in some assignments you've missed, and things like that. So as Mrs. Raymond mentioned earlier, we're, rather than turning these students away, we're wrapping ourselves around them. So every teacher is aware that that student is one of our student athletes or participating in a co-curricular activity, and has this extra incentive to do well. So their teachers are aware, the progress report also has to be signed by one other adult in the building that is not their coach or co-curricular advisor. So it could be their school counselor, it could be their assistant principal, it could be an advisor of a different club that they want to participate in, it could be their Monday E-Block teacher. So it's getting us, it could be their special ed or ELL case manager, just some other adult in the building that's aware, we're all in this together to try to get you success, to get you through. So that's the high school portion. And again, that's very brief, but, and the policy also talks about beginning of the season versus during a season, and some changes that could happen there. Any questions on the high school portion before we talk middle school?
So, to be clear on this, it's not just athletics, because it's co-curricular, it's also participating in the, you know, school plays and musicals and other clubs that are sponsored by the school.
Yes, yes. And that was in the original policy. The way it is stated is this policy applies to any co-curricular activity that has a paid advisor, a teacher that gets, a teacher or some other advisor that gets a contract in payment for doing that activity. That's fantastic. Ms. Brown?
So conditional eligibility, if you're, you can fail, be failing two classes, but not a third.
So I'm going to clarify that, because we do have a lot of students that are on a modified schedule, so if they're only carrying three courses, they can't fail two.
So if they're failing, they can still be failing one even if they're only carrying three classes?
Yes. And part of that also was with competencies. Grades are changing so fluidly. Students who have an NC at report card time, within a week or two, that could have changed to a B. So we're trying to accommodate what's going on with competencies, with recovery, with students taking, you know, whether it's post-course recovery or in-course recovery, and all of those things, and how, at the high school level, grades don't end anymore at the end of a quarter. They just continue on. So even though a student might not have been doing so great at the end of a quarter, within a couple of weeks or a month down the road, they could be doing phenomenally in that class.
So, can I? So, I actually support more rigor for eligibility for co-curriculars. So you'll no longer, under this new system, you will no longer be giving academic waivers
Correct.
At all.
Correct. So it's either a yes, a no, or you're on the monitor reports as though you had the waiver.
And when you have a student who has conditional eligibility, it's every week, and then if they continue to fall behind, does their season eventually end?
It could, yes. So it could, they could be put on pauses and then come back, but obviously, we've had that with students who are in waivers, that, look, you've already been on two pauses, and your grades are not improving, and they just are dismissed from the team at that point. Again, there's more details in the policy, when for every one of our seasons, a report card comes out during the season. So at that point, students who are eligible could become conditionally eligible, and now they're on reports. A conditionally eligible student could become not eligible at that point.
And I do think that the 10-day extension for like the NCs, when students possibly could be making up work, I think that's a really good compromise that you're putting out there for those mid-season reports. And, hold on a second, I think I have to gather my thoughts for just a second. Somebody else have a question?
Mr. Claffey?
Yeah, hi, thank you. For a spring athlete who fails a course, at the end of the course, who goes to summer school, would.
Yes, so you're talking fourth-quarter grades affecting fall? Yes. So what we do is if they take either competency recovery, competency recovery, or summer school of one of those quarter four classes, we do take the new course. We do take the new grade going into the fall season. You're welcome. Ms. Brown? She's going to speak about the middle school, so we can come back to you again, is that okay? Okay. All right, so the middle school piece, the biggest change there is, for those of you who have been around for a while, we used to have a component, there's still the beginning-of-the-season stipulation in the middle school, but we've been down various things about what do we do in the middle. 60 days in a trimester is a long time, and students may or may not go downhill when they're doing other things. So what we have done is, a long time ago, when each of our middle schools had team accountability programs and probation, we used that as the, hey, if you're on probation, you're on that pause, just like the high school students. Those went away. So we can't use that as the in-season anymore. And then, when that went away, we rewrote it to progress reports. But our middle school students are no longer having those progress reports published and distributed. So when I met with the middle school principals, we talked about what can we do in the middle of a season? What kind of monitoring can we put on for these students? Whether athletic season, or the school play, or musical, or something along those lines. So we came up with the idea that the grades would be monitored. Each building is going to do it a little bit different. One of the buildings, a principal or an assistant principal is going to pull those monitor reports in the middle of a season or activity. Another school, they're going to put it on their school counselors. Another school, one of the schools, I think, is going to put it on their team teachers. So at some point in time, and in the policy, we did specify, excuse me, during the athletic seasons, when it's going to be pulled. And the same thing could happen. At that point in time, if it's recoverable, if they have 10 days, and yeah, you were absent, you missed a test or something like that, or you didn't turn in a project, they have that 10 days that they could come back. Whereas if it's so bad, and they can't recover it, then their season would be over at that point. So that's the biggest change on the middle school, is re-implementing that middle-of-the-season check-in.
So I did kind of figure out my last question. So for, I'm thinking about sports or co-curriculars, like plays or music, where someone could have maybe earned a higher spot, like varsity versus university, or you're in a play and you got the lead role, versus a walk-on sport. Whereas other students may not be eligible to participate, but then another student who earned a higher role on the team or play gets that spot. And then they still have responsibility of their team to keep their grades up. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if I need an opinion on that from you. How do you handle that? Is there, I mean, if you've got, if you're like talking about cutting three people from participating because you're saving the spot for someone who's maybe a superior athlete or vocalist, but their grades end up falling, is that fair?
So, we deal with that right now. So we deal with that now, whether students are eligible outright at the beginning of the season, or they're approved for an academic waiver and put on those monitor reports. The coaches know, the advisors know, right from the beginning, this student's on a waiver. So, for example, spring sports, we started last week at the high school, we approved some waivers, their coaches know, you put this student on a roster, in three weeks, when quarter three ends, they could be done. So, and we do have some special circumstances where there's something in us that says, we don't want to approve the waiver based on their current grades, but there's something else in us that says this sport could really help this student. So we sometimes make even more drastic concessions, and we don't approve the waiver. We let them practice, but we don't let them play in a game for exactly reasons like you're talking about. So there's, even though there's a very strict policy, and those of you who know me well, I know I'm very black and white, and this is the policy, and if it's written down, that's what we're going to do. But there are some times that individual students need a case-by-case, let's look at that student and what's best for that student. But you're right, sometimes it comes down to that coach or that advisor of that activity. If there's a hierarchy of who's in this activity, they might have to make those tough decisions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It really makes our academics a team approach. And I wasn't making a pun, actually.
Yep, we're all in this together.
Right. The coaches aren't going to put too much on a kiddo's plate that, you know, help with that balance, which I think is one of the main things our kids need to learn in school, is how do we get everything done?
And we talk about all the time that what we do in co-curricular activities is an extension of the classroom learning environment. All of this is another point for them to learn, that maybe by these monitor reports, they're learning that time management versus, we said no, and now what are they doing? So.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Policy JJJA Student Extracurricular Eligibility, Student Co-Curricular Eligibility, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. May I add one thing? I am so sorry. Just want to make it very clear that this is not effective until August. Current policy is in place until the end of this school year. I just want to make sure nobody's pounding on my door tomorrow to change things.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you for that. So the, I think it's the last policy I have, is policy, I move to approve JJJA-R Student Co-Curricular Eligibility Appeal Form, which is not the full title, but that's fine.
I'll second that.
So this policy used to be the waiver policy, and we have redlined the entire waiver, and if you keep scrolling, I think it's page four, after all the red lines, you'll see that now it's just a one-page appeal form. So if someone is determined to be ineligible to participate in athletics, or other clubs, or plays, they still have the opportunity to appeal that decision. And this is the form by which the student would do that, and have their parent aware of it, so that the school can review the determination and then decide if it was appropriate or not.
It basically just removes the, all the information about being able to apply for a waiver.
Yeah.
But we felt it was important that a decision's made, that student and family should still have the opportunity to appeal.
I like it. Students, do you have any input on, I mean, talk about, you're a sports kid. How do you think about this? To be fair, Mr. Castellano did come to our policy meeting, and was very helpful. I saw him pop in there, so.
Yeah, I think it's good, just definitely, I understand that sports motivate a lot of students to, like you said, get, come to school and do well in school, so I think this can help just keep ensuring that, and also give students who are in that middle ground just some clear guidelines for what they need to do to be able to stay on the team.
Excellent. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you for, I totally put you on the spot for that, I'm sorry. So all those in favor of approving Policy JJJA-R Student Co-Curricular Eligibility Procedures, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So I just have one more thing to note. Policy's been really busy and really interesting.
Thank you, Ms. Gingras.
Thank you, Ms. Gingras.
Thank you.
This year. We had Mr. Castellano come to the last meeting, which was fantastic. Mr. Farley will be coming to our next meeting in April, possibly with a member of the Student Senate, because we are reviewing a policy regarding snacks and drinks in the school to comply with some new requirements for grant funding.
Yep.
And at the same time, the North Student Senate has the
And at the same time, the North Student Senate has this idea about trying to sell coffee in the schools. So Mr. Farley and the Student Senate have been working on some edits to the policy and doing a lot of research that they'll be bringing to us, to the Policy Committee in April, so.
Yes.
Everyone's welcome to attend that.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, I don't know yet, I haven't read the proposal.
If you look at, it's been, it's been presented before. Go and review back, I believe it was, who was, with the, with the black curly hair? I'm forgetting his name, Spencer. He put in a lot of work trying to get coffee in the schools, too. If you wanna go back to that meeting where he talks about it, and then Admin was there and was able to kind of bounce questions off of him, and he presented some information as well. It's a good jumping-off point, because there were some sticking points where we couldn't get it passed, but you could just figure out what those sticking points are and then move it forward so you don't get stuck in the same spot.
Yeah, we've been looking at his past proposals, and he was in Student Senate.
It was a very good proposal.
He wrote a lot of student bills, so I've been, I've been looking through those bills he's written.
Yeah, awesome. Just taking it and run. Okay. Ms. Brown, no?
So we did not have any actual items this month, so we will be meeting next month in a couple of weeks.
Okay, perfect. And this, we'll give the floor to Ms. Oden, who championed human resources tonight, because Ms. Giglio is still not feeling well, the poor lady. Send her some well wishes, everyone.
I'd like to suspend the rules to introduce the motions from the HR Committee from earlier this evening.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to approve the personnel recommendations dated March 27, 2023, the North Boardroom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Comments or questions about the personnel recommendations? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations for March 27, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We did not have JSSBC this week. The majority of people were unable to attend, so we don't have an update on that. And let's bop into unfinished business. I will give the floor over to Dr. Andre.
So we'll be looking for a recommendation to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the National Teachers Union, Unit B Para-educators for July 1, 2022 through June 30 of 2025. And I can let Mr. Donovan go over some specifics.
I will make that motion. Does anybody wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Mr. Donovan?
Very, very quick summary, three-year contract, counting this school year and the next two. Increases, base increases of four, 3.25, 3.25, with steps. That equates to 4.85 and then 4.27, 4.27. We also, PARES under 30 hours, could only accumulate 10 sick days, now they could accumulate up to 25. And other than that, there were a couple changes to bereavement, some clarifying language, but nothing too, too significant.
Okay. Comments or questions? Seeing none? Ms. Raymond?
Oh, wow, if no one else wants to say anything, I can keep it. I just wanted to thank Mr. Donovan for getting us the costing sheet. I did vote to delay this vote until we had it, and I appreciate it. My comments are still the same from the last meeting. I'm glad to see that we are addressing some of the cost of living issues that we are all struggling with in this contract for the PARES, because in my opinion, we could pay them a lot more. So I'll be supporting it. Thanks.
Ms. Lamphier?
I just wanted to commend the team for agreeing to the bereavement leave changes. It was nice to see a little more flexibility for, for anyone that's going through such a difficult time. So it was really nice. It was kind of a caring thing to do, the right thing to do.
Thank you. Ms. Darling?
I was on the negotiation team, and honestly, I'm really bummed out, because I walked into that room with one goal, and that was to see the base pay for first years go up, and it's not where I think it should be. Unfortunately, not everything goes our way, I guess.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the collective bargaining agreement between the National Teachers Union, Unit B Para-educators for July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We are now into new business. We are, I know you guys have been sitting here, you guys have been the best, the best audience that we've had for, well, we haven't had an audience in a really long time, but I just wanna, I wanna thank, well, Adam's always... You're, you're like the default parent, like, nobody just thinks about you, Adam, you're just there, because we just know we can depend on you. That means you're the most important person in the room. So I will hand over the floor to Dr. Andre in regards to new business, and then I know Ms. Oden has something that she wanted to add as well. So Dr. Andre, floor is yours.
Do you wanna make a motion for the recommendation from the Alderman?
Yeah, 'cause we already talked about this, I apologize. So yeah, we've already discussed this.
We forgot.
Sorry about that. What?
We have to vote on it.
What?
Nothing, go.
Oh.
Do you want me to make the motion? Are you gonna make the motion?
I'll make the motion. So I move to approve Resolution R23-098, fund additional costs for the design and construction of a new middle school and renovations and expansion of Pennechuck Middle School.
I'll second it.
Thank you, and we discussed this with Alderman Dowd earlier. Any other comments or questions in regards to the information that was presented? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I wanna say thank you to Ms. Darling for bringing up that sentence. Without this funding, the completion of McCarthy School would be in jeopardy, because that's what we hear all the time, it's gotta be rushed through. And it's about time, like, we asked for the costing sheet for the contract. There's no reason why this couldn't have come to us before, and we could have asked Mr. Dowd to come in here and discuss this with us. I'm not gonna support this, I'm not gonna support this, because we keep getting all these overruns and overruns and overruns. And, you know, you negotiate a contract. Yeah, you put in the contract that there might be some cost increase, but this cost increase is now $10 million probably. That's another $10 million in case people don't understand what bonding is. It's like taking a mortgage out for 30 years. And depends on what these interest rates are gonna be. We, the taxpayers, pay for this, and if something else has to be, we bond our roads for 10 years usually. Now, it's costs, every bond goes up. And when you get your tax bill and you look at your tax bill, and you wanna know why it's so high, these are your costs. Yes, we built this middle school, but I'm sorry, this could have come to us earlier, and the mere fact that we just keep bonding and bonding, it's writing that blank check. And we, the taxpayers, who have a home, and we look at a lot of our seniors in this community that are on fixed incomes. We just supported a contract for the PARES. But what about the people who can't get a raise because Social Security hasn't gone up to meet these costs that just happened in November? So when we take a look at everything, it's our employees that are cost factors, it's our bonding that's a cost factor, and I'm not being negative about employees, but I'm telling you, this is what costs everything in the... And then when we come down to our students, there's maybe 15% left in the budget that we have for classroom and everything else we need. I think that this could have come before, that's why I asked my questions here. And I'm really not happy with this, again. Again, you know, if you were renovating your own home, you would have that contract. And anytime something go up, you would be sitting there with that contract, and you say, well, you know what, I really can't afford those extras on there. We had a contract, and it should have been built into the contract, not coming, I can't go back and ask for another $10 million on my house. No one's gonna pay that for me, even $1,000. So I'm not gonna support this, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I, I take Ms. Johnson's comments to heart, and she's right. We're getting squeezed here in not just Nashville, but Southern New Hampshire in general. One of the things that we're learning through the work that the Redistricting Committee is doing is that part of the reason that we're having problems with our enrollment is because people are struggling to afford to live here. And that's a problem. But it doesn't change the fact that we're building the middle school because the students that we do have need an appropriate place to learn, and they need specific, a specific level of facility in order to do that and to meet current standards in education. I know that this has been coming, the JSSBC has been talking about it for a long time. We started talking about it a year and a half ago when we first found out that steel had like tripled in price, and we were trying to order it before it went up anymore.
It was like a $22 million increase in just the steel.
Just the steel, yeah. So we've, we've known about this for a year and a half, that it was gonna come down to how much money we could save on Pennechuck and Fairgrounds, on how much extra money we would need to bond. And again, this is stuff that was entirely out of the control of the contractors or other people when you're talking about the cost of fuel and raw materials. And that's unfortunately a global phenomenon that we couldn't control. So I'm gonna support it. We have to finish the project, and we have to do what's best for our students.
Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. I don't want Ms. Johnson to be offended, I know you've been dealing with, you've been very busy. But we, three weeks ago, it was brought to our attention on March 6, at the last JSSBC meeting, that this $10 bond, $10 million, I wish it was $10, I knew you were gonna, but, so we've known for three weeks, I think, that this request was gonna be made. And I just don't think it's fair to make it seem as if Mr. Dowd is just dumping this on us at the last minute, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Oh, Ms. Brown?
So I'm not gonna support this. I mean, the project has to be, get finished, but I'm really starting to question both the efficiency and the thoroughness of the project management. In the last three years, it has been numerous times, not just this time, the price of steel went up, the cost of this thing went up. And I, it's not just been that, but every single time, we get it with no notice and a huge amount of urgency, that if you don't do this, the naming of the building, you know what? It wasn't even, we hadn't even broken ground, but we have to know this, and we have to know it in three days from now. Every single item on this list has just been continuously... If it's being so well-planned, and we're trying so hard to save the city every single penny, why is every single thing come down to, we need this decision and we need it now? Oh, but by the way, we actually did know about two years ago that we were gonna be $10 million over budget, but we just didn't know, 'cause we were hoping that we might not quite get there. And now, part of the kind of hopes and wishes and promises of this is, well, we're hoping that we might not actually use this $10 million, all of it, so we can give a little bit over to finish this other air conditioning project. But we can't make that promise quite yet. If we go by the pattern that we've seen, I'm guessing we're probably gonna see another bond or need for money or cut from the school district's budget, and our, or moving deferred maintenance, of which we have $14 million backed up from buildings that are not, that we have currently, that need help, they need support. Some of those projects have been on that list for 10 years. I can't support the constant, like, I feel like they're continually pulling the wool over people's eyes, saying, we need it, we need it now at the very last second. I can't support this, because it's just this pattern has to end, and people need to start asking questions.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approving... Oh, sorry, I thought somebody was talking to me. All those in favor of approving Resolution R23-098, fund additional costs for the design and construction of a new middle school and renovation and expansion of Pennechuck Middle School, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That was Ms. Darling, too? Ms. Darling?
I'm not sure what Ms. Oden.
Ms. Oden? Ms. Oden, she said yes.
No, no, I thought Dr. Andre was going to go...
No, no, she's just clarifying your vote.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry. I voted yes. Affirmative.
Thank you. Yes, now I'll hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Hi, thank you. Just, tonight's just to clarify, June 19, as Mr. Makku mentioned earlier, we wanna make, make sure that we're honoring and recognizing the, our student population, especially the diversity within Nashville. So in 2021, Juneteenth was named a federal holiday, yet the district has never observed it. So when the calendars were...
On a weekend.
Exactly. Right, and so it was a Saturday and Sunday. So it wasn't in the calendar in the past, and then with the four snow days, we went into Juneteenth. And so we needed to make an amendment to the calendar, so that's what I'm asking for tonight, that we would have, we would observe Juneteenth, and then the 20th and 21st would be our last days. And as Mr. Makku said, there are a couple things that we're still working out. So for teachers, it would be a snow day, so they wouldn't report on the Monday. But there's other bargaining units that might be negatively impacted, so we just have to work out, especially with the secretaries, so that they have no loss in compensation or be negatively impacted by this decision. So we're just going through those contracts to make sure silver our units won't be negatively impacted, yet at the same time observing and recognizing the diversity of our student population. So we're just looking for tonight, just to formalize that, the last, the change in the calendar for the 20th and 21st to be our last days, and observing the Juneteenth.
Ms. Raymond?
Are you looking for a motion to have it be a day where the schools are closed? Or are you looking for a motion to negotiate the contracts?
So it's gonna be a little bit of, so both.
Okay. Do you have it? Okay, so I'll make a motion then. I move that we, that the Nashville School District celebrate the Juneteenth holiday on June 19 by having a no-school day for students and educators. And that the district administrators, administration work with the various unions to create MOUs. Is that enough? And I'll speak to it after, if there's a second.
I'm just waiting for a nod. Okay.
I can just keep going on with more words to my motion, but...
Right, now I'll second it. Do you have that written down? I know.
No, I just did it off the cuff.
Okay, I was just helping Ms. Lamphier out. Ms. Brown?
So I had a question, what if, is it possible for us to... Is it June 19? Typically, it's, the federal holiday is observed over the weekend, right?
No, it's just, it's June 19, it's the day that it falls on.
Is it just the day that it falls on, so that's just why it's been for the last few years?
Right.
Okay.
So one of the things that I think we had talked about is in the future, in future calendars, nobody wants to plan on going into June 19.
Well, so that's what I was wondering, could we observe it this year on the 21st?
No. Because it's a federal holiday, but I think...
But it's not required to be observed, we could observe it on the 21st and have that day off that would be, end the school year, so people don't have to come back.
I think that takes away from the inherent meaning and decision between June 19. So I think in the future, what we have to do is, even though we don't wanna plan that far into June for having school, but it needs to be, we just need to come up with a plan for how it's going to be celebrated. Instead of just fingers crossed we don't have that many snow days.
Can I speak to the motion?
Yes.
Thanks. Sorry, I just wanted to say that I think it's really important that we acknowledge and have this public acknowledgement of June 19. June 19 was the day that, that the slaves in Texas finally... June 19th was the day that, that the slaves in Texas finally found out that they had been freed, you know, years after they had been freed, which is completely unacceptable. And I think it's important that we acknowledge that and we embrace that, the fact that our history is complex. We learned as part of our, our redistricting process that Nashville is not only the most diverse community in New Hampshire, but Nashville, at this point, half of our students are non-white at this point. And I think it's important that we start to work as a district in incorporating celebrations and acknowledging important dates to all of our communities' families, whether that be a federal holiday or not a federal holiday, but I still think this is an important first step at really embracing Nashville's status as a welcoming city.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion Ms. Raymond made? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I apologize for not committing that motion to memory. I am leaning heavily on recording devices and television to pick that up properly. Ms. Odin, you had an item that you wanted to bring into new business?
Yes. I, I would like to ask Ms. Raymond to take into the policy committee a way to avoid what happened with the paracontract, something to the effect, the cost sheet must be approved by the board before voting on a negotiating contract at least three days previous to the board meeting.
Okay. Is that a motion? I'll second it.
Thank you. So this motion is essentially so that we, as a board, are able to review all of the proper documentations timely before that item is put on the agenda, or we review it on the agenda, so how we get our normal packets.
And, and also, the union team knows.
Right.
Exactly, because what happened last, the last meeting was unfortunate, but there were extenuating circumstances, and I think this will correct it and make sure that our chief finance officer will have time to work on the cost sheet.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not off the cuff. I'm not sure which policy is most appropriate for that, or if we'd have to create a new one, but.
Create a new one.
Mr. Poska and I will take a look at our policy catalog and probably pull in Mr. Donovan and figure it out. We'll go on the queue.
And clear definitions of expectations make everybody happier, and relationships grow and flourish. So I look forward to what this policy looks like. Okay.
Do we have to vote on it?
All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will talk about this more in policy. We are now at the second public comment, which I know everybody is waiting for, so if somebody could pass me. So just reiteration of our expectations. Three minutes per speaker. We have a decent-sized list, nothing we can't handle. Would you guys like me to keep a timer going so that a timer cues you, or are you okay with me making really intense eye contact and being like, it's been this long? Are you okay with the eye contact? Okay. So I'll just creepily stare at you if we get to the end. I like doing that better anyway, because the buzzer is hard to hear anyway. So up first, and I think, again, I thank you all for coming and staying, allowing us to get the boring business of the district done before we get into the impassioned part of it. So I appreciate you all staying here and seeing, maybe for the first time, just how much fun these meetings are, and to come back. Okay, so first up is Allison Raymond. Allison Roy, MD? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Hi, my name is Dr. Allison Roy. I leave, I live at 3 Hudson Drive in Kensington, New Hampshire, and I work with the Nashville School District, if you're wondering why I'm here, from Kensington. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist in the state of New Hampshire, and in that role, I travel to school districts all over New England to train them to be trauma-informed. In that capacity, I've been working with the Nashville School District for about three years now. I'm also the chair of the Kensington School Board, and I sit on the joint board of SAU16, and I do not envy the role that you all have in this redistricting process. I started working with Mount Pleasant Elementary School in the spring of 2020. They bravely stepped forward to volunteer to have me come in and work with their school and pretty soon after COVID-19 happened. But they persevered, and even when the staff was exhausted and overwhelmed or uncertain about navigating the challenges that COVID-19 brought to our world, they allowed me to keep teaching them, and they kept learning with me virtually. When the schools opened again in person, they welcomed me into their hallways and their classrooms, into their cafeteria and their playground to really be able to immerse in the world of trauma-informed education. What has happened at Mount Pleasant, I can truly say, has yet to be replicated. I work, like I said, in school districts across New England, from Maine to Connecticut, and Mount Pleasant continues to be, and I hope will continue to be, my exemplar school. When I go and speak to other schools about what it means to become trauma-informed and how trauma-informed education can successfully increase student attendance, decrease office-level student behaviors, increase staff wellness and retention, I do this with confidence because I have real data and real statistics from a real school right here in Nashville, New Hampshire. To break up this unique group of people, to disperse, or worse, dismiss, teachers, and to place students in other schools across the district would truly create a ripple effect in this district. The staff at Mount Pleasant have worked with me so closely, so closely, in fact, that they've co-created what we've called the Trust Team, the Trauma-Responsive Unified Support Team. That's their name, not mine. They came up with that over two years ago. And since then, this concept of a student-responsive team that is trauma-informed has been rolled out in four other schools across two other states. Trust is something that takes time to really create and truly flourish within a system of care, and that's what a school is, a system of care. Trust is what every student needs to be able to show up every day to learn, and trust is exactly what this school has in its neighborhoods, its communities, its families, its students, and its staff. I hope that this board is able to make the decision to continue to give this gift of this school to this city. Thank you.
Thank you. What? I, yeah, I was keeping it. But I'm trying to keep, keep it away from the microphone because I saw Jimmy start running around, because I think I was creating, that was me, Jimmy. It wasn't reverbing? It was Paula.
Me, and my phone's.
Ah, Ms. Johnson. No, I'm just kidding.
My phone's on, or papers are rattling.
Oh, that's a, okay.
I thought it was my phone, I tucked it away.
No, okay, thank you. Okay, Caitlin?
Lamondo.
Lamondo. You know what? I'm going to ask that we get these public comment sheets written a little bit bigger so I can see them.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Lamondo, 3 Kim Drive, Nashville. I am a fourth-grade teacher at Mount Pleasant. I've taught there for 15 years, which is my entire career, and I have prepared something on behalf of the entire staff for you tonight. Organizational psychologist Adam Grant once said, "The purpose of education isn't only to impart knowledge and skills, it's to instill a love of learning. Intellectual curiosity is seeking as much beauty in ideas and data as you do in art and music. A mark of a great teacher is a room filled with intrinsic motivation. Mount Pleasant is a school filled with students that love learning and seek knowledge. Mount Pleasant is a school where all staff members, not just teachers, unite to provide students with an opportunity to learn and grow. We provide the space in which students feel comfortable taking risks." Perhaps you're thinking, well, that sounds like all our schools in Nashville. Of course, students are learning, and staff care about them. But the reality is, is that Mount Pleasant is unique, and any person that walks through the historic doors erected in 1924 will tell you the same. Mount Pleasant is more than just a building. We are a family. Mount Pleasant is a place where students and families are deeply cared for. We are a welcoming place where, to steal a line from Cheers, everyone knows your name. We are a community in which students love coming to school. They feel safe here, they feel cared for here, and they know their worth here. If it takes a village to raise children, we are the village. It is not a rare occurrence to have former students come back years after they have left the safe haven of 10 Manchester Street to catch us up on their lives and tell us how much our tight-knit, tight-knit community meant to them and served them well as they moved on to the next stages of their lives. When former students know that they are always welcome to come home, you know you've created something special. Mount Pleasant is a rare and special place. It is not just the deep and meaningful relationships with the children that makes us unique, it's how we serve our families and our community. Our staff works to make sure students feel comfortable within our classrooms, but we also work to help families get the access that they need. We provide a safe space for families during transitions. We connect families with services and rally behind our families during joyous times and during the lowest of lows. It is not uncommon to find staff members donating their own clothing or household items to a family in need. We take care of our family members at Mount Pleasant, and students, parents, and caregivers are our family. Frankly, our staff goes above and beyond in every sense of the word in a way that is unmatched and unprecedented. Mount Pleasant is a rare and special place. Mount Pleasant is a diverse community. We have a large portion of families who speak English as a second language. We have families from all across the socioeconomic spectrum, with a majority qualifying for free reduced lunch. We take time to build relationships with our students and families. We don't just know the parents or guardians, we know the whole French Hill family tree. We could give ancestry.com a run for their money. I'm almost done. We have a history with our families and our neighborhood built through mutual trust over nearly 100 years. In a day and age where everything is disposable and everybody is swiping for the next best thing, our community has stood the test of time. Mount Pleasant is a rare and special place. I'm wrapping it up. Colleagues in education understand the difficulty in bridging the gap between home and school, and it can be even harder working with a population that has various challenges. However, we have done it. Our night events are well-attended by families. These families do not face the burden of finding transportation because everyone in the neighborhood lives within walking distance. Are these same families going to be able to be part of a new community if our building closes? I can't see the future, but I would venture the answer would be no. Our staff is so dedicated to our community that it's a regular occurrence that staff members seek out grants to improve the lives of our students. One of these grants, through the work of our wonderful librarian, we've recently been told that our school is a finalist for the Cliff Year of the Book Award. Our staff worked together to complete all the pieces of this application, and we are among the few in the running to receive $25,000 worth of funding for literacy. We recognize our diverse population and actively seek literature and nonfiction that reaches our lowest to our highest learners in a variety of languages, including but not limited to Spanish, Portuguese, and Swahili. At Mount Pleasant, we celebrate our differences and encourage everyone to embrace their cultures and heritage. Mount Pleasant is a rare and special place. In closing, we humbly ask the board to allow Mount Pleasant to remain open and continue to be a stabilizing force in our neighborhood. We understand that school districts are a business, but we are in the business of people, and our people are the people of French Hill. Closing our school would devastate our families, staff, community, and most importantly, our students. Mount Pleasant is a rare and special place, and we invite you to come into our building anytime and experience that magic firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you. I know. I'm getting reminded that three minutes is a hard line. Spencer, I was just talking about you.
I came in right in time. If you liked anything on the coffee bill, feel free to reach out. I'm glad, I'm glad it still has some hold these days.
I'm so embarrassed that I couldn't remember your name, and then you showed up here just to school me, so I'm just going to dive of embarrassment for a quick second.
It's okay. No hard feelings. It's been a little bit of time.
Spencer Dunn, you are no longer a student here, right? You've graduated.
I have not.
So I don't need to cross out your address on here for, for pasek, right? Well, because when you were a student, all your stuff wasn't published, but you're now a larger student, so. Okay, Spencer, you have three minutes.
All right.
And I'll start it up now. Spencer Dunn, everybody, our old board rep.
So my name is Spencer Dunn. For those who don't know me, thank you for the introduction. I am a current student at UC San Diego, majoring in electrical engineering, and the timing worked out pretty well. I have spring break right now, so I'm heading back to California on Friday. But I did want to touch on a few things. I'm a proud Mount Pleasant alumni, and just to echo many things Ms. Lamondo touched on, it, Mount Pleasant has such a great community. I have so many memories of walking to school, going to genots, meeting my teachers, and like, this, this community that I still see now. It has been how many years since I've been in the Mount Pleasant school system? And I heard about this just recently, as I was flying back home, I was like, you know, I need to speak. And I think that what Mount Pleasant has as a strength is our community and our diversity. And those are two things that I don't know that any other schools in the district can touch on. And with closing the school, what are students that don't, that don't have the capabilities, don't have the means to go to other school districts? I mean, our strength is being in the hub, in the community of French Hill and the North End. And that community is very strong, and I think that, that is, you know, where a lot of those bonds are given, where all those bonds are formed, as we can see, I'm still here now. And I think that, you know, it's very easy to look at just the black and white and just the paper of why a school should be closed, but I don't think it's as black and white as that. And I think that Mount Pleasant has a great family, they have great experiences with their students, and they have affected so many lives, and they continue to. And I just want to ask the board to not view this as just black and white, but view this as a whole spectrum, as everything, as these families, and as these students, and as these teachers, and as Mount Pleasant as a whole community will be affected. And don't just view it as black and white. Thank you.
Up next is Katie McMacan.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Katie McMacan, and I'm here tonight representing Mount Pleasant Elementary School, the parents, the staff, the students, and the school as a whole. When we all first heard about the potential closing of Mount Pleasant, we were in shock. How could anyone shut down a place that has built a wonderful community, helped countless families, and has been a safe place for so many children? How can anyone take the stability of our kids' needs away from them? If our school closes, our third graders will have to attend three different schools in the next three years. As parents, we want what's best for our children, and after talking to so many others, I can truly say that Mount Pleasant is what's best for our kids. As the news about the potential school closing has come out, I've heard from many testimonies from Mount Pleasant families as how the school has helped the community, and I would like to share a few with you. A parent of two Mount Pleasant students, Nicole, shared with me that her son Brock was diagnosed with ADHD and dyslexia in the summer of 2022, and started his third-grade year struggling to read and to write. The Mount Pleasant staff has helped him get an IEP, and now he is reading and writing at a great, appropriate level. Just last week, he read a poem to his, out loud to his class, and he was so excited and proud to be doing something that the year before he was terrified of. Please don't take the school away from Brock. Another parent, Danielle, shared the story of her daughter Lily. Lily was three when the pandemic started and had to finish her pre-K education over Zoom. And because her dad was severely asthmatic, her parents made the decision to homeschool for kindergarten. Starting first grade without the socialization during those three years was rough, but the Mount Pleasant staff swooped in and helped Lily make friends with her peers. Caught her up in reading and writing and made her feel welcome every time she enters the school. Please don't take the school away from Lily. As for me, I myself started at Mount Pleasant in 2000, my brother just the year before. Mount Pleasant went above and beyond for my family, they're here today, and it has impacted my childhood in the most positive ways. Here I am today with two children enrolled in Mount Pleasant, one in kindergarten and one in second grade. My son Noah started kindergarten via Zoom due to COVID. He has an IEP for speech delay, and at the start of his journey at school, his peers could barely understand him. Now, with all the help from Mount Pleasant, my school, my son found his voice. Please don't end Noah's journey to a path to success at Mount Pleasant. I truly believe closing the school would impact so many families and children, mine included. I'm speaking for the past students, current students, and I'm also speaking for the future students. My son, who is just three months old, I would do anything to have him at tet in Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant is more than just a building that's been there for about 100 years. It's an open door, it's a safe place for our kids, and it's a home away from home. It's where our teachers love to teach. It's where our teachers love to teach, and it's where our students love to learn. Please don't take that away from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Up next is Scott Flegel. Scott Flegel.
There's a couple, a couple of tough acts to follow there, I have to tell you. Nice to see you all. And hello, everyone, and thank you for coming. My name is Scott Flegel. I'm an attorney in Nashua, and I've resided at 11 Edson Street in Nashua's North End since 1989. With the help of my ex-wife Michelle and my wife Sheila, I've raised three kids in that home, and each one of them went to Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Jane, our oldest, is married and is a new mother making me a grandpa. That's exciting news. She's currently living in Nashua, and she was the first of the three who went to Mount Pleasant. Our second is Calvin, who currently resides in Hingham and works for Spotify. Finally, our third child is Mia, who is a junior at Nashua North. Suffice it to say, our experience with Mount Pleasant has been extensive. To say the very least, it played a prominent role in providing these three kids with the right foundation for learning citizenship, appreciating education, and living a good life. Jane has a PhD from UC Berkeley in environmental science, policy, and management. She's just finished a stint at the White House working on President Biden's climate legislation. Cal has a master's degree from Boston University in computer science and engineering. He's an engineer for Spotify in the Boston office. And then there is Mia, a junior at Nashua North, who is in very rigorous academic schedule and is a leader at her school. And I'm not here to brag about my children, each of whom has drastically outkicked their coverage, as they say. Although I could go on and on. What I'm here to talk about is the unique quality of the educational experience that each one of them enjoyed at Mount Pleasant and how we, as parents, credit in part their education-building blocks at Mount Pleasant. Almost anyone whose child has attended Mount Pleasant will tell you the same thing. It's a unique, exceptional place of learning. The environment there, I believe, might be unique in the state of New Hampshire. I'm not sure there's another elementary school that sports the diverse student population that continues at Mount Pleasant. At that school, there are kids from every economic level who learn and play together on a daily basis. There are kids from so many different racial backgrounds. Each and every year, our kids went to school with kids who were still learning English, and they were taught by Mount Pleasant teachers to be kind, helpful, and patient with those kids. There were symbiotic relationships, and I'm certain that continues to this day. Another thing that makes Mount Pleasant unique is that so many of the children can walk to and from school. Many parents of the students could only afford one car, others had no cars, but Mount Pleasant gets them a chance to walk, attend school dances, after-school activities every day of the year. That sort of thing is rare these days, and I believe unprecedented in Nashua's other elementary schools. It's very important to parents of these kids. Of course, the teachers at Mount Pleasant have always been a special bunch as well. Their relationships with their students have, in some instances, continued as friendships lasting decades. When the kids were playing sports at older ages, some of them would regularly come to watch their former students play at Penachuk and then later at the high school. And the teachers at Mount Pleasant have memories like elephants. We cross paths with them downtown and in the supermarket and are astounded by the fact that they remember our children and are so genuinely interested in where they are and what they're doing now. I'm sorry, but I'm not convinced that those sort of generational friendships arise at Nashua's other elementary schools. So for Sheila and me and my children, the bottom line is this. Mount Pleasant is worth fighting for. Our kids have grown up well and are doing great things, and their experience at Mount Pleasant was the foundation on which their futures have been, those futures have been built. When the vote on this issue comes, please ask yourselves whether the dollars saved on the overall budget are worth sacrificing what Mount Pleasant continues to add to the Nashua community every day. A place where kids from all backgrounds can learn together how to be good kids and better people in a safe environment with an astonishing history of graduating kids who turn into wonderful adults and parents themselves. And because of that, a large number of them remain in Nashua to raise their kids as well. Thank you for listening to me tonight, and good luck. I hope you all make the right decision for this community and the kids that are in it.
Thank you. J. Britton? Sorry. Is that J. B.R.I.T.O.? Is that what I'm reading? Joy. And again, I'm like really trying hard to make the intense eye contact I said I was going to do, and you guys are reading, and I love that you came prepared, but now I'm just gonna have to start hollering out that it's been three minutes.
I'm not prepared, and I'm not reading, so you're gonna...
Okay, so we'll just maintain eye contact the whole time. Okay, thank you.
5A Berkeley Street. I am in the Mount Pleasant School District. I had the pleasure of walking my now-young men to school as young children. Even though I moved them over with me when I went to another school, I still have remained in contact with Mount Pleasant families, and it's absolutely true, echoing what everyone else has said, it's a truly unique school. I'm also a teacher at elementary school in Nashua, so I'm gonna give you a different perspective and hopefully an offer to solution. Do not close an elementary school in Nashua. I teach nearly 500 students every week in Nashua. Burdening large class sizes is so negative to student learning. Hearing you listen to what Mr. Hoffman brought up earlier about this IKER is, I think, what we call it, and the importance of education at the elementary level to get the students set up for learning for the rest of their lives and retention is so important, more so at elementary than any other level. Closing an elementary school is gonna give a ripple effect to all the other schools, and I love, I love Mount Pleasant. I don't think it should be closed, but I don't think any elementary school in Nashua should be closed. I teach an average of 89 students a day. 114 students is my big day, and let me tell you, as committed to teaching my kids as I am, those kids don't get the same education out of me when I'm teaching 114 of them in one day as if I had a smaller class size. I'm an art teacher, in case everyone's looking at me going, how can you teach that many? Elementary unified arts teachers teach an enormous amount of kids. People saying we have small numbers, there's an ebb and a flow to student population. Since I've been at Fairgrounds Elementary where I teach, I have between 485 to 525 kids in our school. That's how many I teach. We have 100-ish right now of ELL kids. Trying to maintain the best learning environment for those kids when you have high numbers is impossible. You talk about retention in the future, we need small class sizes in order to teach our kids. Redistricting is the solution, not closing a school. Every other elementary school that has to absorb and change for a closed school is going to impact these kids, not just now, but as the future. Of all these places that I'm walking around, I'm, I'm three blocks from Mount Pleasant. Within a two-mile radius, I see, right by Greeley Park, a residential building development. I see the Bronstein housing projects that were being built, you know, torn down and rebuilt. Where are all these young children that are gonna live in these places going to go to school? Down by Farmers Exchange, another residential unit is popping up. There are gonna be children in here, and we need to place them somewhere. So the ebb and the flow, the solution is not closing a school. The solution is redistrict so that there are smaller class sizes across the district. Let's get these kids so that they aren't failing in middle or high school, do smaller class sizes.
Sorry, I'm taking notes on what you guys are saying. Sonya Prince.
Hi. My name is Sonya Prince, 49 Tufts Drive in Nashua. I'm a mother of three recent graduates in the Nashua Public School System. One of my kids attended the fabulous ESL program and is now graduating from college this spring. These teachers helped him succeed. I'm appalled that the superintendent took it upon himself to tell a group of Nashua teachers to search for new jobs because there's a 70% to 80% chance their school will close. Tonight, he said, redistricting is in its infancy stages. He alone does not decide to close any schools. It has to come before you, the board, to vote, and also the board, the city board of Alderman, to approve it. Only someone who might want to sabotage our school district and public schools would want to make such a statement. Nashua is already struggling to find and retain teachers. The superintendent knew by making this statement, he would add to the already existing strain on our district and our teacher shortage. He chose to purposely mentally torture well-respected and needed teachers in Nashua, along with stressing out their spouses, their children, and their students. I don't think he had a right to do that, but it is what it is. It's very unprofessional to abuse teachers and staff like that, in my opinion, and it's absolutely horrendous. Nothing has been discussed, voted on, or approved. Some school board members had no idea of the statement being made as of Sunday. Nashua's building multiple large apartment buildings, like the previous lady mentioned, and these children will need a place to learn. This bold and premature statement on behalf of the superintendent is meant to intimidate and abuse. I'm very appalled at this whole topic. Thank you.
And Adam Marqu. Last but not least. And I am, I am putting the timer on just to let you know.
I'm wearing green, so I was incognito earlier. Adam Marqu, president of the Nashua Teachers Union. There were people confused on why I was wearing green today, but I am. I'm back to talk about Juneteenth because the motion you made was for educators, and I want to be clear that your intent was everyone and not educators only.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think that was the intent, but we do have lawyers that seem to think they're lawyers that really aren't, that like to argue with me about things, and I don't want this to be belabored because your intent was everyone, but you said educators. So the other thing I would add is that I don't fully agree with the superintendent on calling it a snow day because that will have implications on other contracts. So we treat federal holidays as federal holidays and observe them on the Friday or Monday if they're the weekend or the day of the week that they fall. So it's either a federal holiday or it's not. The union will not agree to calling it a snow day, so I don't think that changes what Ms. Raymond said, but I know that there are people watching from my four contracts and said, well, if it's a snow day, then I could do this. And my answer was, no, you can't. So we'll have to just figure that out, too, but that is, I wanted to make sure, especially with the motion, that we're all on the same page. And finally, my friends from Mount Pleasant, you've done yourself and your school and your community very well tonight. Very proud to represent your school and the teachers' union, and we are behind you as we continue this battle. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's just, can we, can we revisit that motion really quickly? Does anybody have any objection to going back and just doing a friendly amendment?
I'd like to, let's just redo it, redo the motion. So the motion should be to direct the Nashua School District to recognize Juneteenth, no, recognize the Juneteenth federal holiday and negotiate MOUs with the unions so that school buildings will be closed that day. And I think that would cover all staff.
Okay. Do we have, do we have consensus? Was Adam listening? Was that good? You weren't listening.
I was distracted. It's the Mount Pleasant.
You guys.
Has a thought. Ms. Oden.
Don't you have to withdraw the motion that was approved before we make a new motion?
Yeah, I said I wanted to withdraw the motion. Do we have to vote on that?
Yes.
All right. I move to withdraw my previous motion regarding Juneteenth.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Raymond, do you want to restate?
So new motion. My new motion is to direct the Nashua School District to recognize the Juneteenth federal holiday and negotiate MOUs with the unions so that district buildings, buildings or schools?
Yeah, do you guys want the day off, too?
Yes.
So the district is closed.
So that the district is closed for business that day? Does that work? Or should I say district, district schools are closed for the day? I'm just gonna say and negotiate MOUs with...
Well, I think...
End it there.
Yeah, because there's a lot of complications within different contracts to say whether the district offices are closed or not, like, so.
All right. I will just say, the motion is to direct the National School District to recognize the Juneteenth federal holiday and negotiate MOUs with the unions.
Yes. Okay, we got a thumbs up, we got a nod. I will second that. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now on to board member comments.
So someone should tell Ms. Cincella just to fast-forward the tape through that whole mucking up of the previous motion, so she doesn't waste her time.
Not at home watching this, just completely enthralled with popcorn? Okay, so I am gonna start board member comments. Unlike public comments, there is no time limit, and you can, although we enjoy a time limit from our board members, too, but feel free to speak on whatever it is you feel like speaking on during board member comments. Ms. Oden, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. I think you missed my hand at the HR committee, but I want you to know that our HR director told me that they had 80 candidates at our job fair, which was amazing because we had such a large snowstorm, so that was encouraging, and she sent a lot of good candidates. So I just want to say kudos to our HR department and all the people. I know it was on Channel 9, they showed some of our administrators interviewing people, so thank you, and hopefully we'll get a lot of new employees from that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and listening to their opinion. And also, I'd like to thank the many members of the community who reached out to me for the loss of my sister two and a half weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
I second everyone, I'm sure, is gonna say the same thing. We really appreciate the passion of the parents and teachers that came out to speak tonight, so thank you for coming out and using your voice. And thank you, and I wanted to send another congratulations to the Nashville North CTE students who had done so well at their culinary competition. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lampier?
We received a lot of emails about the Mount Pleasant possible closing, and, you know, I read all of them, but seeing you all here tonight, speaking so passionately, and seeing all the signs outside and all the kids, I really want to thank you for coming and showing us that it's not, that there's more at stake than what we might see just by reading through papers and stuff. And I promise that we'll take all of this into consideration if we have to decide to close a school. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey? Ms. Raymond?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight. We hear so much lately, it feels like public education is under attack, and, you know, because I'm at the State House as well, I've been seeing a lot of bills that seem to target teachers, and it was really lovely to see a community come together to talk about how integral school is and school teachers and the community that they are creating is to the well-being of the kids in our city, and I, it was really refreshing, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Erling?
Mount Pleasant. I have learned so much about Mount Pleasant this week, thanks to a lot of emails and for the people that have written in to me personally, I do try to get back to every single person. One of the things I learned tonight, though, is that it's not just a school. It's a building that's filled with amazing individuals who work within it, and from the sounds of it, equally amazing kids. And I'm just, I want to just take this moment to say that I'm really grateful that I am here at the Nashua School District where we have so many individuals that have created such positive change for so many kids' lives. And I think sometimes we all get caught up in this moment of all the bad happening, and I just want to say thank you to every one of you who came out tonight. Thank you to all the staff at Mount Pleasant who continue to make things great for the kids. And unfortunately, as everyone here knows, part of the job is looking at the black and white and the math. to after-school activities, the size of the classrooms, and what I really liked was Dr. Roy's comments about the trauma-informed education. I think that is key in any educational system. It's the best way to reach students, and it's the best way to teach because you make those emotional connections. What I would love to see is every school coming in here and saying that exact same thing about their students and their teachers and their families. And if you guys are coming in and saying this about Mount Pleasant, I 100% believe that it is happening in the other schools, but they're not here and hearing about this. So I hope that that's transferable over the district and not just specific in your school because I'd want to bottle you guys up and spread you all over the place. I also want to thank Dr. Andreid for going in and having that upfront conversation prior to being found out on social media, which we know is, what, 75% false? So I appreciate you going in and having that conversation with everybody, even if it was difficult for people to hear and for you to have, but I appreciate it. I hope Ms. Johnson is doing well in her last two and a half weeks of change. We're all thinking about you and appreciate that you're coming to meetings and participating, and we're all here for you, and our students as well, and it's nice to see Mr. Dunn come back in. We're obviously doing something good here in Nashua. So I appreciate everybody, and I am looking for...
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's 8:15.